Well, while it's dawn, we don't care. Let us pray.
Heavenly Father, we bow before you, Lord, to thank you for this day and for all the blessings, Lord, that you've blessed us with, that we're so thankful for. And we thank you for our jobs, Heavenly Father, and for the talent that we work for. We just pray that you'd be with us, Lord, as we go into this meeting, just help us to make the right decisions and guide us, Lord, and be with us and just help us as we go along the way. We ask Heavenly Father that you'd bless the sick people out there, Lord, just be with them and comfort them and heal them if it could be your will. Pray, Heavenly Father, again, that you'd just be with us, just guide us and direct us and forgive us all, Lord, when we fail you, and we'll give you the praise for all. Christ name we pray.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I told you he'd finally be here now.
Yes. All right, we got to welcome everybody out tonight to the city council meeting, January 13th, 2020. Need a motion to call the meeting to order?
Motion.
Tabby?
Thank you.
Darren? All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody? All right. Need a motion and a second to cover all of what's on the agenda.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three, reading of the minutes. Carla was out sick today, so we don't have the minutes, so we'll table them until next meeting. Make a motion to the second. Mandy, can you make a note to Carla that we need to cut the school there?
Yeah.
Checks. There. Motion from Eugene, need a second?
Sir.
Okay. All in favor? Item number five, paying the bills. Do we have any?
Yeah, we're trying to bring it up.
Yeah. Carla's going to have to get on this, we'll catch up to her next week.
She's going to have to get one.
All right. Home to old business, we have yet to pass the budget for 2020. We are waiting to decide what we do on the new labor law with Carla. Everybody needs time to look over that and give us some thought.
So we're going to table that, right?
Yeah, motion to table.
Motion to table.
One second. Tabby? Motion, done. Second. All in favor? Everybody? All right. New business, item number one. At our last meeting, we appointed Jonathan Neutes as our police chief, and tonight we're going to officially have him sworn in. So at this time, Jonathan, if you'll come up, or I'm Tony.
Sir.
Yeah. Because they're going to stop them at home. Yeah. You got a slutty one?
My wife can't. Surely she will have that.
Put your hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand.
She needs to be on.
Yeah, she needs to be on that side.
Raise your right hand.
Hi.
Hi.
Jonathan Neutes.
Jonathan Neutes.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of the office of Chief of Police of Hackleburg, Alabama.
We... Let me re- be fair. That I will faithfully. That I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Chief of Police.
Of Chief of Police.
Of Hackleburg, Alabama.
Of Hackleburg, Alabama.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations, Jonathan, again, and thank you for a real good job, just doing a good job so far, and looking forward to having you and work here for many years. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I told him today that it looks bad, I ain't heard nobody groan about it.
Give it time.
Don't come this late. Item number two, discuss employees' request to attend 2020 winter conference in Montgomery, February 17th through 20th. Registration dues and margin will be approximately $800.
Motion to send you.
Second. Darren? All in favor?
Aye.
Tabby, I think you just listened on here, discuss hiring a full-time street department employee?
Yeah, we need to post it for the next couple of weeks.
I thought we decided last meeting that we'd wait till the spring.
No, I got a phone call from some individuals saying that he needed some help, that we didn't have anybody to help him clean out culverts and everything, and we keep putting it off, and putting it off because we got part-time help, and we need to, we need to go ahead and post that job.
I might motion, post it. Who made, who called?
That's it.
Well, I mean, I, nobody's called me.
I know. I just got a phone call from some, a couple of citizens. Sir, Eugene made a motion, I'm a second.
Okay, Eugene makes a motion. Nobody's putting off that, we'll come in for a couple of months. Ten seconds. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
I think we can get another month and a half, two months, of full-time and part-time. Or if you're full-time size, they can't do it like that. There you go. About a $40 an hour man, though, because you don't wait a month, month, hour, somebody.
Would you vote? Would you vote nay or yes?
We'll just talk to him at the last meeting. We'll just talk to him at the last meeting. So what's the reason for waiting? Save for what? Because we, it rains nearly every day.
Well, I tell you, the concerned citizen that called me was the employee and the other one that helped him clean out the culverts. So this is not, this is the issue. And when you had a volunteer that cleaned out culverts because Steve was not available that day, he was not available, and neither was our other part-time help, and we were in a situation, so this does not need to continue on. Because one reason we promoted Chad was to have somebody to supervise, well, he ain't got nobody to supervise right now.
He will have.
That's when. You don't promote him anything, supervising somebody yet.
He might, I don't want to promote him right now. We might sign that one right now. Well, that's, I mean, that's what I bet. I might motion, okay, we'll have to put on the next, when we're down on the, when we're down on that deal, we'll cut all the part-time out and resolve that issue. How you going to cut all the part-time out? I'll vote majority. All right. Item number four, discuss operating the gym for personal and public use. Darren, you had that?
Yeah, I just want to know what the schedule is on it. I mean, like, the rec center has it, I know, like, during the, during a certain time of the year, the rec center has it, and then they have how many nights a week, Tabby?
The rec center's closed to the public from October till March. That was voted on back in October, when Jessica Pruitt was here, when the decision was being made on what her schedule would be for the, what do they call it, the market something else, or whatever, they had a consignment thing in there. So all that was discussed in our minutes back in October.
I don't think it was voted on, but it was discussed.
Right, it wouldn't.
No, I brought it to the attention of the council, that both, the youth wanted permission to use the facilities.
Right.
And nobody disagreed in here.
Right.
Okay, it's no different than when the youth wants to use the parking rec at the softball fields, which they will be coming in February, because that, that league starts from March all the way up until August. And then those fields are assigned to the youth program at that time, too.
That's standard, how we normally do it.
That's right. And we've been doing the October till March shutdown to the public for 20 years, and anything that happens has to be scheduled, if there's any kind of public use, to make sure it does not interfere with any of that time, because we've got so many teams in this league, and the schools and the churches are allowing us to also use those facilities when we can't. We, we don't have enough overflow over here, and that's been going on for 20 years.
Right. I just want to know, like, what the nights was, though, I mean, to see if there was any kind of way we could work out something to make sure, if there's people wanting to use the gym, why they can't, and just to be able to describe the people, I guess, in better detail, or if there's a few nights available, if they could use it, if they, if we had somebody up there over it, that's all I'm trying to do.
We did have somebody over it during the summertime, and that individual was Eli Barnett, is that correct, Darrell?
Mm-hmm.
And he was scheduled to open that gym on Tuesdays, Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays to the public for a set number of hours, and that was it. And then that, that job ended starting in October, and then we'll have to bring it back in front of the board to see if we're going to continue that process.
Do we have a master schedule of?
Yes, it's Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays is set for the use. Saturdays and Sundays are scheduled, and that's what I told the individuals that started this process, this argument, all they have to do is call up here to the city hall and request to make sure that it's used, not using it, and scheduling. Because there was three events that these individuals were in that gym that had not been scheduled to be in there with no supervision either.
I think next year, we need to schedule everybody, including the youth, and that will take that completely away. We, we need to know which nights, who's got what, what nights, instead of just letting certain people up there anytime they want to, and opening up in practice. I went up there the other day to look at the floor, one of the boys that, that was involved in the floor wanted me to see it. Went up there and walked through, there was a group, a woman and some kids out there practicing basketball, and it should have been at least two days before you get on.
Well, that's because we got an email from, from the mayor that told us it was ready to be practiced on, and that didn't have nothing to do with it. We were told that we could start practicing back on it Tuesday. All practices were canceled, so we were following direction.
That's when you got the last certificate, your mail.
That's correct.
But the first thing I said, it needs another code, and they said that's what we said, but the mayor didn't want that.
Well, I don't, I don't know that conversation. But the issue going back and forth that you're referring to was there was some young adults, they were not kids, that were in that gym three different times without scheduled times. One time, we had Shane Fleming's group was scheduled to practice on a Thursday, and they were in there. I don't know how they got in there, but they were in there. And then that's when we found the back door open, and y'all had to fix it again, didn't you, Steve? So they were getting in through this back door at the back somehow, coming in there, and, and most, there was only, out of that group of boys, there was only three boys from Hackleburg, the rest of them were from somewhere else. And they were all young adults, they were not youth league. It's just got to be scheduled. I mean, why don't we hire somebody to work the summer? Because you want supervision in there to prevent kind of things from going on.
It's just about got to happen.
That's right.
Well, really, the gym shouldn't be running all different than the park.
That's right.
I mean, you've got all kinds of stuff going on, and if somebody wants to have a benefit term or whatever they call, and they'll, it's available, so we let them have it, and if it don't, I mean, the youth league takes precedent over everything.
Right.
I mean, I don't know the issue with all of that, I seen some arguing, just like everybody else did, and I didn't jake into it, because I really wasn't concerned about it, but, I knew it was getting out of proportion, but anyway.
It's just got to be scheduled.
We didn't vote on it, I'd say we just agreed, like we normally do, that it sits there.
I just, all I was asking for is for people that's asking me about the hours, or, you know, and I can understand their, I can understand their situation, and wanting to use the gym, but I, I want to know, like, sort of reason for sure why they couldn't. I mean, if it's occupied by the youth league that day or that night, then I understand that, they don't need to be up there where the kids are practicing and things, but I was trying to see if there was any open nights available that the public could use it, and if it was, to try to, you know, post it or figure out how to do that with some supervision, because, you know, I understand we're using it for the rec, for the kids and everything, but it is also a public gym, I mean, so, I can see.
What are you proposing, then, when you want to open it to the public?
The nights that are the days, or just that it's not being occupied, that would be the only time.
Not Sunday.
So every day is occupied. Every day.
Youth practices are Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and then we still have to use the high school and elementary gym to have enough time slots for all these teams to practice.
God, how many teams we got?
Um, we got two six-and-under, two eight-and-under, two ten-and-under. Now, these are boys and girls, there's a bunch.
Probably 20?
No, you got, you got, um, six-and-under, eight-and-under, boy and girls, they're separate, so that's three different groups, so that's five. And then ten-and-under, boys and girls, and twelve-and-under, boys and girls. So there's right at 10 teams, I think, 10, 11 teams.
That's, but that's a bunch for two gyms.
That's right.
And they have to practice the whole bedtime there.
That's correct, they got to be finished by nine o'clock.
What day was it that these people come?
And some of them practice right after school. Now, also, you're not, you're forgetting a few things. The gym in the morning, there's men and ladies that come in here and walk this gym every morning, that, nobody's, they're forgetting about that, that the public comes in here, that they have keys, because they cannot get out, some of the elders do, and they walk around the perimeter of the gym. And so this situation that you're referring to, are we going to open it up to let young adults come in here and practice, or play basketball on a other day? And you want to look at, is it people from our own town utilizing, or is it people from everywhere else? Because it is a community gym. Steve, you ran, can I ask him a question? He ran the gym, what was it, about three years ago, two years ago? During the week, what was the type of individuals that were?
About half and half, half from Mercury, half from Hill County.
Right.
They come up here and play with five or six from Hackleburg.
Which is fun, I mean, you know, it's a community gym.
And we've even got an issue, too, that, um, there's some high school kids wanting to utilize it, because you're not allowed to go into the high school gym without a teacher being in there or a representative of that school, and so the, they may call in, and I'll go up there with them and sit as a supervisor with those individuals, and that's, uh, what's his name, the one that always calls us, Darrell? The boy that's on the singer that hurt his leg?
Libra.
Libra Akis will call, Alex will call, there's two or three that'll call, because they want to come shoot, they want to work on their game, and they can't get in the high school, so I'll come up here and sit with them while they're shooting.
So I mean, if, if somebody just wants to get in there, we'll figure out a way to help them out if we can. Everybody good with that?
No. I just, I just want to know if there's any available time to see if we could work, you know, if there was a night or two a week that we wouldn't, it wasn't occupied, if there was some way we opened it where it would, you know, both people would be using it, the rec kids and then the citizens could be using it, so if there aren't any nights available, I mean, that's, I just need something to be able to explain to somebody if they ask me about coming to the gym, or why, why they couldn't, or something like that. I know in the past, we hadn't had that much of an issue of it, but if some, if there's more people getting involved, wanting to play basketball, or something like that.
What, by how many people are you talking about being issued, one or two, or was it 30, 40, 100? Because what I seen was it was just basically one or two people. I mean, I don't know, I mean, all I seen, all was on social media, and nobody complained to me about it, and they complained about everything else, believe me, but, I mean, I'm not trying to be ugly or nothing, pretty much, Tabby said October tomorrow, she know it's full. If they want to go up there on Sunday, and somebody goes supervising, I guess they can go up there on Sunday, but it's only the day we use it, I mean, I don't know, they can go up there and play from 10 to midnight, somebody want to go up there one.
I mean, as long as I can remember, we've always basically closed it during rec league.
I mean, basically, we don't have to close, basically, times available, but, that Taki knows, he knows the schedule and everything that's going on, it's just like with the ball field, where a lot of times they'll, somebody will use it, have a benefit, softball tournament, baseball tournament, whatever, they do that a bunch.
And we just scheduled, Tabby's scheduled.
Right, but it has to be around them. So whatever, whatever's going on.
No, I just, I mean, I was just looking, if somebody's a taxpayer in the town, and they come up and ask me if they can use the gym, and I tell them, no, I just wanted to know exactly why.
Then you got to know, you tell them it's closed for express purposes.
That gym is the public as well as it is anybody, so, I mean, but to tell them they can't use it, I just wanted to know, well, it's occupied every night by the rec league, and you just can't be in there, so.
From October to March, from March to October, now, you know.
I didn't know what night was that they was up there, that they were.
Are you specifically saying the night that all this stuff was on social media?
The big blow-up.
Well, you got to go back, there were three other, two other events that they were in there, too, that didn't get put on social media, that they didn't complain about. It's just the one night that I come up there, I get a phone call, saying there's some people in the gym, don't know how to get in, and I come to the front door, there's a padlock on the front door, and the back door's standing wide open. So what do I get the impression of? They got in the back door. And so I get them all out of there, and then that's when it blows up on social media. Okay? And only two of the boys in that, out of the 10 that were in there, were from Hackleburg. The other ones were from other places, and I gave them the instructions, you got to schedule it. Schedule it, and then there won't be an issue. Call up here to the city hall, right now, the only time it's available is possibility is Sundays. There could have been, I think last year, we had a couple of times where people had birthday parties that brought, um, those blow-up things in here. So everything's got to be scheduled in that gym. Even, even when the summertime that we open it up to the public, it's scheduled. It's not that you're coming in here unauthorized.
I agree with that, I mean, I just say, if we put a schedule up on the door, or just whatever, to make it plain to everyone, I, I didn't know the full schedule, I knew that we sometimes close it, but I didn't realize that we had people wanting to come play basketball, and if we do, then if they can't, I just wanted to be able to explain to them.
You know, the sad thing is, is these individuals came through the youth program, too. Every single one of them came through, and this youth program's been going on for 25 years, and this setting, this, this gym now, has been going on since it opened up in 90, what year did that gym open up, '92?
Hmm, yeah, I think so.
Somewhere in there. I mean, that's, that's how long, that's part of the reason they built it, was to assist in that, so, that process has not changed.
All right. Everybody good? All right. Item number five, we need to purchase some culverts. There's a 60-inch covert on 118 before you get to the intersection of, what is that?
53.
53. That we're going to have to replace. The bottom's rested out, and water is running in beside it, so it's washing the road out. That covert's going to cost about $1,800. And then we need a 24-inch and an 18-inch, both of them are on 121.
Yep.
And those together will be around seven, 750 for them, too. Motion to approve the purchase of those culverts.
When do you finally put them in, actually, our other employee, or?
Uh, we just got to get them in. Put in before we put.
When's the rolling, probably?
Springtime.
And we don't, then we don't.
I just say, wait till we hire another employee.
This, this 60-inch has got to be replaced as soon as the rain stops raining.
Then you think our one employee can do that by us now?
They wish I could.
County will help us.
We can do it with the back, and we don't have to be on the tractor.
If we have four employees, we can do it.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm trying to make sure of, so.
We can shovel it out, if you can help us.
I hear you, I think, yeah. When they get back, I'll dig a hole from here to channel.
What do you want to do?
We got to change them. We got to get them done if we're going to pave them roads, too, before it's going to be settled, or we'll have swags in the road, if we wait till it's time to, to do that, to put, change them.
We've got the manpower to do these 60-inch two-way shop, we'll come up and help us on that. We just got to get it done. Did you make a motion?
I did.